Our agenda tonight is committee meetings. I'm Jim Sands, I'm a member of council. President Bias is not here because of some illness. And so, I'm just gonna get things started. The committees just kind of flow on their own. Tonight, we have a committee of the whole with a couple discussions. Ken Butler will start that. I think Yolavu Gosniv will come in after that. We also have a finance and personnel committee and a transportation committee meeting. We're gonna flip-flop those two committee meetings because it turns out Transportation Chair Chris Nysley actually has more of the finance issues than we do. And then we're gonna end up with an environment committee. So, I'm gonna turn over to a member, Butler, for the first discussion during our committee of the whole.
Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for getting here this evening. On the committee of the whole, our first topic is air, water, soil, and impact concerns. And my hope this evening was that we would open up the door to allow people to share some of their thoughts and concerns about protecting Athens' air, water, and soil. This came about at a number of our town hall meetings. It was a topic that was present a number of times. And I wanted to let the community know that it's something the council is aware of and it's listening to concerns and fears and worries of our community. So, we thought this evening would be a great opportunity to allow citizen input, to offer thoughts and ideas regarding potential industrial activity related to using our algal soil. So, I want to open the podium up for comments from people with their thoughts and ideas regarding this particular issue.
Yes. Remind -- thank you. If you want to speak about -- we do have a time limit. We ask that you limit your remarks to about three minutes. We will be keeping time, and when you reach that time, we'll let you know. That's just to preclude, obviously, some people going on and on and taking time that others would like.
Hello. My name is Christine Hughes. I am a business owner here in Athens. Village Bakery, Delazona, and Catalyst Cafe. And I've been working, when I'm not working, for about a year and a half now to learn more and share information about the industrial process of shale gas extraction, widely known as fracking. And when I began hearing and asking about it, no one thought it was gonna be coming to our part of Ohio. But here it is. So, The Athens News says just a couple weeks ago that already 30 leases have been signed in Athens County. And I've heard from one of my food suppliers that he has signed a lease, and several others that I know of and buy from are considering it. I've been reading reports of some of the effects that people living near this industry have suffered. And I plan to visit an area a couple of hours from here in West Virginia that fracking's been happening for a couple of years. I believe that the health and environmental risks of fracking have been downplayed by the industry and by state government, and that financial benefits have been overstated for an industry that will not create any permanent jobs, whose profits go mostly out of state and into the hands of a few, and whose success depends on keeping energy prices high. Every lease signed will impact neighboring lands. I think the city of Athens has little ability, we might hear more otherwise, but I don't think that they have much ability to control air pollution that may worsen in areas where this occurs. But it does have a responsibility to protect our drinking water. And if you sit here as a city official and believe that the state and federal governments are going to protect us from these possible dangers, I think you are mistaken. And I hope to help you learn more about it, appoint you in directions that you can learn more on your own about it. But my business and my life depend on clean water, and I'd like to continue to enjoy that luxury. And I would like to ask if the city can help township and county officials become well-versed with the complications and risks associated with this kind of drilling, transportation, and disposal of chemicals and solid waste that may even come from other states into Ohio and maybe into our area. So, that's probably three minutes or so. All right, thanks.
Yeah, there are interested citizens who want you to communicate, express thoughts or concerns or fears regarding this issue. Welcome to come up. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Michael Reinhold Eichenberg, and I am a resident of Athens County. And I don't have any prepared remarks, but I'd like to echo the concerns that Christine Hughes shared. I think the evidence is overwhelming in the little that I've researched this issue, that the effects are indeed understated by the industry. I think to say the effects, the negative environmental effects are understated, I think that's an understatement itself. I think the areas where this type of gas extraction has occurred are completely devastated, and I would hate to see that happen here. And whatever financial gains may occur, I think they are very short-lived. The financial devastation caused by the environmental devastation is so much worse. And the jobs are short-term. I think a lot of them are sort of the traveling variety. I don't know that they would produce many jobs locally. And I don't know what, you know, the power of city council is to try to limit or completely prevent any type of fracking from occurring. But I strongly encourage, I think it would be great to explore that and set an example because we've already seen, I mean, we've already seen what's happened elsewhere. It's not hard. You don't have to do a whole lot of research, and it would be silly to allow this to happen here. So, thank you.
Greg Broadhurst, West Side, Athens, Ohio. I just want to encourage council to take a long look at this and what's been happening as far as impacts that occurred in regards to hydraulic fracturing, horizontal drilling in the west, where it's devastated landscapes, ruined water, destroyed businesses, especially people that are involved in livestock. I'm not just talking about one movie. I'm talking about it just story after story after story. Now, you have the ability under home rule to legislate under health, safety, and welfare regulations the activities of such operations as they affect water and air and even roadways outside of township rule and county. But anything that's in our three-mile limit can be responsibly legislated for in regards to this type of activity. Also, there's something called a ten-year term in travel, which has to do with water quality under U.S. EPA regulations, despite the fact that there are exemptions under the rules of the 2005 exemptions that were given in the Energy Bill, the infamous Cheney exclusion, that exempted a lot of this activity from EPA regulations. But we can still do it locally. So, I suggest if you're not familiar with it, that you go ahead and really look into those avenues. One, time and travel as relates to wellhead protection, our particular wellhead protection area, and also the three-mile rule, which we operate in as far as development. No permits, no ticket, no laundry. So, that's the way it goes, you know? And they can jump up and down all they want, but it's like they're not gonna beat health, safety, and welfare. Cheney exclusion, no thanks.
I live here in Athens. I'm extremely concerned about fracking for natural gas in this area. I'm very pleased to hear about the proposal to ban it in Athens. And there's one particular point that I want to raise, I don't believe has been raised yet. I was just slightly late to this meeting. I happened to be watching a baseball game, Cincinnati Reds. The Cincinnati head of Chamber of Commerce and/or tourism, I'm not sure exactly, there was a woman being, not exactly interviewed, but taking part in commentary on the baseball game. And she mentioned, and I hope I remember it correctly, that southern Ohio was an especially popular place for tourism over the past year. In fact, Ohio ranked top for tourism out of the 48 states, if I'm not mistaken, and southern Ohio more than the rest of Ohio. Why do they come to southern and southeast Ohio? Largely, I believe, because of the natural beauty and because of our state parks and the lakes. And fracking using millions of gallons of water per well and resulting in water pollution and potentially, I believe, affecting the lake water and not to mention the scenic beauty of the areas where the fracking takes place, I believe could seriously negatively impact tourism in this area. And that means the economy. That means jobs here. Thank you.
Yeah, there are interested individuals wishing to discuss.
Lorraine McCosker, Athens. Prior to coming to Athens, I worked as a public health nurse for over 15 years with women and children, and primarily with women and children of poverty. And where I lived, we had quite a lot of it. And so, although I've been very estranged from that since my, since coming to Athens, the recent information by the Ohio Children's Defense Fund that indicated that we were up above the 36 percent of our children in Athens County live below the poverty line was pretty astonishing to me. Also, today I happened to attend Jesse Jackson's presentation, and he talked about poverty and the long road we've traveled, but we haven't traveled very far, in essence. And I had a moment to speak, and I said that I really, you know, if you look at our region historically, it's been a boom and bust economy, and our poverty is really related to the legacy of coal extraction for the past 200 years. And we were left with these, with this legacy, pre-environmental law. Well, now we're faced with this concept of gas extraction that is not regulated by the environmental laws that we put in place. And Jesse Jackson pointed out that Lyndon B. Johnson implemented the Clean Water Act and the Clean Air Act. Well, this kind of, this method of extraction is exempted from that. So, my concern is that we're heading even to a bigger situation with poverty and impacts to our environment, our social, our social system, our communities, and our economy. Just dramatic. We will not be able to attract the businesses that we want in this region. We will not be able to attract professors who would like to come here and are faced by some drilling rigs and things like that. So, thank you.
Yeah, there are interested citizens.
My name is Camille Scott, and I'm a student at a higher university, and I don't want to beat the fracking horse to death. But I do want to talk about, at least elaborate on what Lorraine said. I'm part of the Students Here Coalition and Beyond Coal groups on campus, and I'm sure you all are aware, we work to shut down the Elashe Heating, or Coal Heating Plant on campus. And that was a lot of work, and I hope to reap, I hope the community can reap the rewards of our work in the future when the coal plant is shut down by 2015. And I want to express a concern that, like Lorraine said, this region has been certainly exploited by the coal industry. And my fear is that the process will only happen again with natural gas companies. And from a student and an active perspective, I think it would be, I think this fight's gonna be even harder because, as she said, it's not regulated yet, and people aren't as aware of the damages of fracking yet as coal industry, as the coal industry. And I know that this fight is going to be hard. And personally, I'd rather not have to fight quite the hardest fight as we did with the coal plants. And I guess just echo everything that they said. I'm certainly concerned about this. People say that the OU students don't care about the Athens area, but we certainly do. There's a lot of students here in the audience today. And I certainly am concerned. I love this area. I've lived all over the United States, and I chose Athens to settle for these next four years, and I'm in love with it. This is only my second year here, and I love this place. It's beautiful. I spend time at the state parks, and I don't want to see that natural beauty go to waste as well as have my water poisoned. So, thank you for your time.
I'm actually a resident of Meeks County, but we do a lot of business in Athens, and I hope you'll be willing to accept my comments. Thank you. I think that you and the Athens Council have a responsibility, constituency, to provide an outstanding and unique example in the state of Ohio. This community, this area stands alone in the state in its values. This is reflected by the fact that two-thirds of the Athens population turned down issue two, the livestock care amendment, in the last election cycle. The only county in the state of Ohio did it. And they did it because they were informed, because they were engaged and involved. And I'm very much involved in the Ohio food community. Let us never forget that the largest business in the state of Ohio is agriculture. And it's a profound business, and it has the potential to provide sustainable livelihoods for our children's children inter perpetuity, as it has in the past. But if we compromise the ability of our region to produce safe, healthy food, we have nothing. This is our sustainable industry, and this is our future. And I'm an engineer, and I work in big projects and long-term perspectives for big, huge companies. And I can tell you from a business perspective, the most valuable thing this region could do with its petroleum reserves is to sit on them. They're gonna be worth a lot more in 100 years than they're worth now. I'm saying that as a businessman. If I was gambling, betting, you know, investing, however you want to look at it, I think better to wait about 10 years and see if there's a way to do this safely and well, and let other people learn the hard lessons. But let's not compromise in a rush something which we can't put back, you know? So, as a, as part of the food industry, I ask you to act in some way. Find a way to act. Find a way to stand up and make a unique statement for your unique constituency. And my, I think the most obvious and simple and straightforward suggestion that the vast majority of the state of Ohio, the vast majority of citizens of the state of Ohio will understand very well, is to tell this industry that if they're gonna do business here, it's obvious that they have to do it under the regulation of the Clean Air Act, the Clean Water Act, and the Safe Drinking Water Act. I brought a California bride and two kids in diapers to Meeks County to raise them in a pristine natural environment, and we're all poisoned with C8, yeah? So, I'll go to a meeting tomorrow night to have somebody tell me what the preliminary research results are from five years of studies. But my family was poisoned by an invisible water system, by wastes that were injected into, into the ground in West Virginia. I don't trust the people who tell us there's no problem. Thank you.
My name is Dana Carlson. This weekend, I had the privilege of going to Pennsylvania to the Mother Earth News Fair, which was attended by tens of thousands of people. It is situated in Seven Springs, Pennsylvania. There was a group there, an anti-fracking group. They're pretty well organized. They've been having this industry in there for quite a while, and it's done an incredible amount of damage. What really hit me, though, I mean, I talked with a lot of the people who were around that booth, but what really hit me was I purchased an anti-fracking sign from them. And as I was carrying it around the fair, people would stop and say, "Where did you get that?" But the comments that they were making showed that they actually had personal experience with this. One guy said, "God, the smell is terrible. They're just right down the road. The smell is terrible. My, my neighbor is, tells me that, you know, there's nothing that he can do. They've already poisoned his water." There were so many people that talked to me about this kind of thing. If you've seen a map of Pennsylvania, it goes in sort of an arc from the southwestern, southwestern part to the northeastern part. And the sheer volume of drilling there is so scary. Now, if it's true that the Utica Shale is even more valuable than the Marcella Shale, we will see that kind of thing here. And that, that is going to have a terrible, terrible, people, the impact on the economy, on the farming. But the amount of damage that that industry has done to the water, the drinking water in that state, we will not know now for a while. But we don't want that to happen here. I have a well. People in my family have wells, water wells, and I don't want them, I'm concerned about my own land, whether or not, because I don't own my mineral rights, whether or not I will be impacted by this. The more municipalities and townships that do this kind of thing and make these kinds of statements, the stronger we will be. Thank you.
Well, my name is Dan Borzak. I'm a resident here in Athens with my wife and my two children. I moved here from upstate New York about five years ago, which, and I view that are familiar with this issue, know that it's been very contentious up there in New York State, and they actually passed a moratorium on horizontal hydro-fracking of shale for gas. There's two things I want to touch on here, kind of overarching from what's been said. One is that there can be this impression that if you're anti-gas drilling, you're somehow naive and you think we don't need energy. My thinking is that I have seen nothing good as a potential result of this type of energy development to make me want to rush headlong into it or want a community to do that. There's work in the process now with the EPA reviewing this whole issue with proposals and a report due out. I think it's next year's a preliminary, and then I'll find a report in two years to tell us just what the environmental impacts are. Because this industry exempted itself in 2005 from this, which is kind of like you exempting yourself from the 55-millimeter speed limit, saying, "Well, I don't speed, so why should I be bound by that law?" So, they're in a rush to get this done. Every dime that we put into extracting fossil fuels, really, really, really dirty, dangerous fossil fuels, is a dime less that can go towards renewable energy, alternative energy. Every dime we invest in the fossil fuel energy industry just delays what we're going to have to do anyway, that all of your kids are gonna have to deal with, and my kids, and I don't want that. And I don't think that any of us want that. The second thing, if you're thinking that maybe this is a little too touchy, a little too controversial, there are dozens and dozens, if not hundreds and hundreds, of other city councils, municipalities, counties, and states that are struggling with this and want it addressed as well. There are people out there for resources to learn as much as you can about the legal aspects, to learn about effects to things like property values in places where drilling is taking place, or where leases are on lands where they haven't even put a drill bit in the ground, and the property values are down. Or banks won't give mortgages to people that want to buy property with a lease on it. So, we're not, we're not naive. We know we need energy, but we know there's better ways. We know we don't have to rush into this. And we also know that there's a lot of other communities struggling with the same questions. So, I thank you for tackling it, and I urge you to really take your time and give some careful thought to this. Thank you.
My name's Janelle A. Stock. I'm the Athens City School Nurse. Before I became the Athens City School Nurse about 18, 19 years ago, I did hospice work for many years. And the thing that I have read that concerns me the most is the contamination of water. I'm astounded anymore at the number of people I know with cancer. People in their 30s, their 40s, their 50s. I look out at this audience, I'm just curious, how many people out here know someone who's had cancer in their 30s or 40s? Okay. I know when my parents were my age, I don't recall them knowing anyone in their 30s, 40s, 50s. People are getting cancer at younger, younger ages, and if you look at the research, they're saying it's the environment, and it's food we're putting in our body, it's the air we breathe, and it's the water we drink. And that is my biggest concern about fracking issue. So, I don't know nearly as much as a lot of the folks here about it, but I think that even if we can do something symbolically, it has a lot of clout, to just make that statement. Thank you.
My name's Bob Sheek. I live in Alexander Township, but I lived 21 years in the east end of Athens. I just wanted to share some information from an article that appeared in the Columbus Dispatch today that conveyed something about the urgency of this issue, that it can't be postponed. Just let me read a couple comments to give you a feel for what's going on. Oklahoma-based Chesapeake Energy has about 600 workers poring over land records in county offices across Ohio. In July, Chesapeake officials estimated that the company has spent between $1.5 billion and $2 billion to acquire the rights to 1.25 million acres in Ohio already. The company estimated the value of the gas, butane, propane, and oil covered by those leases at $15 to $20 billion. The competition for leases is conveyed in a photograph that appears, this is the Harrison County Lease Office, Land Office, and the crowded ends of the lease office, representatives of various companies like Chesapeake, and sitting in the hallways going over the property records. So, that, but anyway, the payoffs for leases are going up, and the competition, this is the article again, the competition for the article again, "The Competition for Shale Has Reportedly Driven Bonus Payments to New Levels." Rumors of $2,000 an acre have given way to rumors of $3,000 an acre payments and more. I'm not sure what Athens County can do, but there was an article not too long ago that quoted Patrick and Ken about the possibility of developing an anti-fracking, or something like anti-fracking ordinance that would be modeled to some extent on what they've done in Pittsburgh. And I would hope that you would pursue that expeditiously.
Any other comments from the audience? Thoughts or comments from colleagues on council?
I just want to say thank you to the citizens who have come here tonight to express opinions, share facts, and also offer, you know, comments about this and your concerns about it. And I think Pat Lang very succinctly stated last week that when something concerns our drinking water, then, you know, the safety of that, then it is a concern. So thank you for your time.
I would just like to add that this is a small footprint of the county as a city. Looking at all you out here who are concerned, my first suggestion would be right out of the county commissioners, because they have jurisdiction of a larger footprint, right to the state reps, senators. Although I know, you know, how much it'll be heard of in Columbus, I have no doubts. But we've got to start someplace, and that's a, you know, just the fact that everybody's here shows that there's enough concern, that that's the first step. Again, it was just a small footprint of the county. We'll go from there. Thank you for coming.
And again, to thank you for all the citizens and community members, concerned citizens that took time to even to express their expertise and knowledge and concerns regarding our air, our water, our soil, the potential natural impact in this community. It's somber and challenging, but I do think that we are committed to looking into this and will continue to progress. Please do send information or emails to us as well as we continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Buckland. We're still operating under the committee of the whole, and Councilman Verdisney has some comments about domestic partner benefits.
Thank you. So as part of our ongoing effort to make the city as inclusive as we can, to make sure that the city cares for all its employees the same way, we've passed a series of laws in the past couple of years dealing with the LGBTQ community, and some of those have included strengthening our discrimination ordinances in the city, creating a domestic partner registry that should be in effect or very shortly, seeing that it is in effect now, and also updating or creating some hate crimes legislation that protects members of our community, protects their safety. There's one piece that is not there yet, and that's something we're bringing up tonight because we have a draft for domestic partner benefits for city employees. And this is something that we discussed previously when we passed a couple of the other ordinances. And basically, this follows 17 states, over 160 universities across the country in providing health insurance benefits and family medical leave to couples, long-term committed couples that may not be married, may not be allowed to be married by state law. And so in a draft that we have, this would cover domestic partners that have shared a common residence for at least one year, they can demonstrate financial interdependence and also testify to an exclusive relationship. There would be a registration with the city if there was an employee that needed these benefits or that could use these benefits. We anticipate the cost would be quite low, even though health insurance is very expensive. The number of employees that the city has that would take advantage of this would probably be very low. But it is something that can help attract and retain employees to the city that are skilled and qualified, and to make sure that, like I said earlier, that we do care for all our employees in the same way, and not just in how we interact with them, but in how they receive benefits from their city employment. And basically, I put this on the agenda, see if there's any feedback from council, first of all, and then if there's any, anything that the mayor's office or auditor's office would like to add at this time, or if there's any reason why we should not be moving forward with this. Any comments from council?
Quick comment. Any legislation that we pass would affect heterosexual couples as well as homosexual couples?
That's absolutely right.
Okay. The same benefits and requirements would apply.
That is correct. So regardless of sexual identification of the family, they would have to go through the same process and meet the same requirements that are outlined in the ordinance, the way it is written out, or the way this draft is at least. Another question?
How would this work exactly? Would there be a form that they would fill out indicating that they do qualify?
Yeah, that's a good question. And the way the ordinance would, the way the ordinance is designed now, the mayor's office would create a registration form that would have to be filled out by the employee, and it's, would be based, we do have models for that from the University of Ohio University that has a similar, although perhaps less stringent requirement for domestic partner benefits. But there are application forms that we could take from other places and make suitable for the city.
Member Buckland?
Thank you, Mr. Buckland. I just want to acknowledge and remind everyone that the first two ordinances related to this were passed endlessly as a council, and I want to voice my support for moving forward with this one as well.
And I would also like to add, the Committee to Move Athens Forward was a group of community residents and students that came together and initially made these proposals and asked the city to address this. Any input from the mayor's office?
Is this, excuse me, the same draft from spring and no changes?
Yes. Yeah, I hadn't seen any proposed changes to it, but we're, of course, open to any suggestions that they're making.
This time, we don't, we have, we should try and figure out how much it might end up costing for the benefits at this point.
I believe, and this question was brought up previously, and unless the city employees are drastically different from the university, we would probably have zero or one to two employees that would participate in this. I don't know the exact number from the university, I'm not even sure that publicly, but one number I was told by someone that is knowledgeable at the university was one employee with, and they have how many thousands of employees or hundreds, compared to the city's 130 to 150?
Full-time.
Full-time, yeah. So that's, I think it's a good concern to voice, but if you base it on other institutions that have done this, it doesn't seem that there are a huge number of people that are eligible or that apply for it.
I'll just say that in August, I met with the benefits person at the university, and he gave me copies of some forms that they used, and I forwarded copies to the mayor's office, to the service safety director, the auditor, the personnel director, and the law director, and asked for comments regarding this particular vehicle. The auditor's office is the only one that I've heard from yet, and they, as they should, expressed concern about the cost. So it's impossible to know the cost, but we have to be able to get as close an estimate as possible, just for budgeting reasons, so. It's a, so anyway, these officers have seen proposals similar to what the university is doing, and I just asked for their comments, so. And I thought, you know, I would, auditor's office centers back a couple of weeks ago, so I imagine we'll be getting more soon.
And then if I could perhaps suggest, if this is something that you would want to do, perhaps ask the city employees, how many of them would participate, given the limitations that are written into that ordinance?
I don't know that I would ask. I mean, I think it's a benefit, we're going to offer it to all city employees. I do, the personnel director is still fairly green, I mean, she came on in the spring, and I just recently spoke with her about this. She's actually in a training session right now, but when she returns, we'll check that.
Excellent. Great. I just wanted to make sure to get the ball rolling again, so. It's a matter of time you're working on it. Yeah.
Anything else for the committee at all? No? So a while ago, I did mention that we were going to flip the Finance and Personnel Committee into Transportation and City Services Committee, just because Member Nigley has a lot more to talk about in the Finance and Personnel Department. So right now, we're going to move into the Transportation and City Services.
Thank you. And I do have, go ahead.
Member Nigley, why don't we wait a moment for people who were here for one discussion and ready to leave?
Did you want to go with this and just bring it up as a draft? I mean, I didn't, I plagiarized yours.
You said plagiarized.
You're going to Finance and Personnel.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right, I'll go ahead with the transportation item.
This is Finance, but I want to get it to Justin.
Okay. Thank you. And those of you who have agendas will notice that it's Transportation and City Services that I'll be reporting on tonight. And five of the items that I'll be mentioning are mainly updates, one of which is information about an ordinance that we'll be moving forward with. First item listed is the Mill Street Assessment, and this is for the final assessments now that the repairs and construction are completed in the Mill Street area. And the clerk of council has received a copy of the amounts, and the total amount of that will be $25,215. The next item is what's called a CDBG application, and what this stands for is the Community Development Block Grant Program. And we have applied to that program to work on the Grosvenor Street slip repair. And some of you may have noticed in walking in Grosvenor Street that there is a lot and with a slip that's been, we've looked at on our city street tours for some years, and we've known that this is a high priority item. We've applied for a $75,000 grant for this project, and we won't have official news until later in this month. The total cost for the project is approximately $280,000. Next item is the wastewater treatment plant, the Energy Efficiency Study. And this is really a project update for council members and for citizens. The required legislation for this was passed with an ordinance earlier this year, ordinance number 7111. But we have received final project approval of this from our granting agency, and some of you may have noticed in Sunday's newspaper that there was an advertisement, and this is for accepting sealed bids for the project. And the repairs that are going to happen include interior and exterior lighting upgrades, replacing the HVAC system with a fluent heat recovery system, and then some exterior improvements to the pump and control building to improve the insulating value of the building. The project is partially being funded through ERA, the stimulus money funds for the energy efficiency projects, and it's administered by the Ohio Department of Development. Fourth item is the wastewater treatment plant. What we're doing now, you may remember that this project was discussed at the April and May and June meetings, and the project-wide plant upgrades will be taking place in 2014. What we're doing now is entering the engineering and design, the first stage of the planning for the larger project. And so we will need authorization from council for the city to enter into the contract for this design work. And then I believe the portion of this project will be approximately $800,000.
Can I just add that that money has not been appropriated yet either?
Okay. So we will need to move forward with an authorization and appropriation. Okay, thank you.
And this was our $100,000 debt transfer?
Yeah.
Okay. In addition, we've learned that we need to transfer $100,000 from sewer debt fund into the sewer plant fund.
For this project.
Project, okay. Transfer $100,000 from the debt fund. Okay.
From 758 to 755, so.
758 to 755. Okay, thank you for the update.
No, 750.
750.
750 to 750.
Oh, I see, so, yes, 750, Senator.
Okay. Thank you for that additional information. Fifth agenda item, it concerns a water line replacement, and this is proposed for Joneswood, Riverview, and Terrace. And we will need authorization from council to proceed with requesting proposals and entering into a contract for the initial stages of design, with the cost being about $50,000 for the design portion of it. The project would replace existing 1950s-era cast iron water lines within, underneath those streets. The water lines in these areas are currently among the most break-prone of the city, and them occurring at least several times a year. So the water line breaks and low water pressure resulted in the area being under a boil order several times during 2010. So it's another one of our wonderful hills with water lines on them and in need of, very much in need of repair with them being the age that they are. Just additional background information, that the city nominated this project to the Ohio EPA's Water Supply Revolving Loan Account, and it was identified for funding for a low interest loan. And we may or may not want to draw on that loan. We might have enough local funds, as I understand, in 2012, or are we going to definitely be borrowing?
It's my understanding it's almost a $900,000 project. $900,000 project.
So we'll probably be taking a low-interest loan. That sounds like a good way to go. Okay. We would like to complete the design this year and construct the project in 2012, and so that the, right, the low-interest loans would be beneficial for the city. Last item is just under miscellaneous, is about the Carriage Hill Bridge Replacement. You might have noticed in the brief press release in the Sunday paper, this is a bridge owned by the city, and it is at the base of the hill by the Carriage Hill Street Apartments, and we are going to be replacing that this year. And the construction for that is to begin shortly, with completion by mid-November. So people traveling in that area should be aware of it, and that part of the time, it's going to be reduced to a single lane.
Can I talk about Court Street as a miscellaneous, too? Just to let people know.
Probably a good time.
Any other comments from the city?
Just an update that on this Thursday, in order to do our phone alley, Rose Alley, excuse me, sewer, we're running the hydrant line across, oh, you've got two different things.
You've got two different things.
On Thursday, the water line for the water suppression for the junction that's being renovated has to go from across the street over to the junction, so we're going to have to close that one block of Court Street, starting in the morning, and we're going to complete it in one day. People can still get uptown, but they'll just have to diverge around, so make them there.
You bring that up because it is kind of transportation-related, since Court Street will be closed, that one block.
Okay.
The other one, of course, is a constriction on Rose.
But the dates are eluding me now.
Okay. I don't remember.
I'll make sure we get it out.
Okay, so that will be later this week, that a portion of Court Street will be closed.
In and out before Parents Weekend.
All right. Good, thank you. Any other items that?
I will mention passing I received from the Department of Transportation, their inventory of our bridges, which I've asked, I've asked Andy Stone, Director of Public Works. It's essentially their evaluation on the list of street bridges, as well as the condition of them. It's just a synopsis that they give us yearly, I believe.
The most significant finding in that report is the bridge across Margaret Creek that could impact, of course, the railway, you know, our recently annexed area up there, so we'll keep you posted once they keep us alerted to what the repairs will be and when.
Okay. And just as an aside, this bridge kind of inventory and information from the Department of Transportation is very helpful for the city Public Works Department as they plan, you know, the city being around the river, we're reliant on bridges to get around and in and out of the city, so keeping them in good operating condition, which the Public Works and Streets Department have been really diligent about doing, is essential. So this is one more piece of information that helps us. Thanks for the update. I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goss. We'll go on to finance and personnel, it just has miscellaneous. First of all, I think we'll recognize the mayor, who has just passed out to council members kind of a timeline and items for discussion, regards the 2012 budget, which usually begins, that discussion usually begins in late September, early October.
Well, that's it. Essentially, I will freely admit, I got this from Kathy. She usually puts it together, so I get a jump on it. Since October's coming, and that's the time that we start working on it, in October. Her synopsis of areas to look at are pretty complete, cover a lot of the things we need to cover. Really, again, the best numbers we're going to get up to date will be that end of September, of course, that'll give us the three-quarter mark of the year, and we'll be able to round it out a little bit better. I mean, every month we get better numbers, but again, those good fractions help us a lot. And again, this is just a draft, we'll have to fine-tune it and decide what we want to do, but you can see if we start talking about, let's say, the Grosvenor Slip, we have to start thinking about putting money aside for that, other big-ticket items as they come along, capital improvement items as they, as we've scheduled, you know, everything from, again, Oxbo Bridge to the slip, and all sorts of surprises we may have. Director Stone has been, has applied for some money for some of the FEMA money for the flow issues, slips that we had during, it was April to May, I think it was, a short window that they consider as here under disaster conditions. We'll have things to work out on that. And that's all right, I just want, you know, if you see something that needs to be changed or something that jumps out that we need to cover, so this is just a first glance.
Council will probably begin our work in mid-October, once the September figures around, so we have a lot of.
One other quick thing to talk about, I guess if you're done with the budget, for now, anyway. I was out of the office at the end of last week, and this came in on Friday. It is a resolution accepting our amounts relates from the county, and so I gave the original copy to Debbie just now, and I made a copy. And the cover letter, in the past, I would get this often in August while council was on recess, and it would, they would want it back by October 1st, and so we've never really gone through three readings on this, but the cover letter on this one doesn't have that deadline in it, so I didn't have time to call today, but I will. But I just want to give you a heads up that this might need to be passed under suspension at the next meeting, if they need it by the 1st of October.
And we're talking about the 500?
Yeah.
500,000, 600? I mean, this is the money we get from the county, right?
Yeah, this is our mileage, and we have to pass this if we want to get it, so, yeah, it's about 800,000.
So it behooves us to step lively.
Yes, it does, otherwise we won't get it.
Mayor, do you have anything else to follow?
I have my list.
She's got a list.
Does he want me to go over it?
Go on, go over it.
We're looking tightly at the budget, what we need for the end of the year, and W. Roger Ray Hazlitt looked at a number of funds, and this is what we found. So this will all be wrapped into an appropriation ordinance. Parking garage, we need about $30,000. We expended money this year for energy efficiency improvements, but the budget is healthy, so there's the money there. The water administrative fund needs $10,000. Sewer maintenance, $10,000. Pam Walton from Court needs money in her Fund 232 underage drinkers. I'm not sure how much, but again.
I have 15,000.
Is that what, oh, you knew? Okay. Recreation needs 10,000. Sewer admin needs 10,000. And I'm also requesting a transfer in Athens Police Department, out of their 101 salaries, 100 lines into their supplies, 2 and 300ths, in order to give through the end of the year. Their healthiness salary line item, just not enough in the supplies.
And these, this list that you spoke of, these funds have money just unappropriated, so we just need to appropriate money, so we're not, we're not taking money from other bases and moving it in here, so. All this will be up for first reading next Monday. Some, some items may need suspension. We'll try to separate those out. Mr. Goss?
I just had a quick question on, some of those amounts were nice round numbers. Are there any specific large items that need to be paid for with those appropriations?
Most of these, I think, are operating.
Just to keep the operating budget for?
Gas and supplies, for the most part. The most that come in are TC.
Most of these are going into 2 and 300ths, just services and supplies. We're not done yet, I mean, we're looking very closely at the fuel costs, but with the auditor's offices requested, to see what they still have in order they can shift, you can transfer within those 2 and 300ths. But there's a number of departments, and this is what have been told, no safety margin, meaning fire, auditors, transportation assistance, recreation. But at this time, they have not identified what we would need to complete the end of the year, but I anticipate coming back.
We put the word out to the staff that they should be looking at budget items for next year, and they also generated a short, the first draft of what the TC 100s might look like for next year. That's all the personnel for all the, with certain assumptions. I mean, we still have some unknowns, so we'll be up for, what is it, union contracts with the police organizations. There are unknowns in terms of overtime as well, but at this point, it's a start. And again, he just, he's, he does conservative number spreadsheet on that. I think last year we went back and forth throughout six drafts before we set up something. So this is the first, first time. I haven't had a chance to look at it, he sent it to me, and I've got a file through it now.
This is the time of year when, when budgetary planning, finance and personnel gets real nitty-gritty, so. We'll be bringing everybody into the discussion. We've, in the past several years, had some planning meetings outside of council, so I'll be looking at those also. Outside of council meetings, outside of this chamber, I guess. So miscellaneous, finance and personnel, I think we're done with that. So we'll move on to the environment committee. Mr. Goss, you have several things to talk about.
Thank you. Energy is on the committee tonight for the environmental committee. We have two items. The first is residential gas aggregation program. Funny word for what really is pretty simple, is the city grouping all residents that don't opt out into one buying group for natural gas, and that would keep Columbia Gas as the servicer and keep Columbia Gas delivering the gas, but simply have a different company that the gas physically comes from. And so this was passed in 2009, on the November ballot, by the residents of Athens, to give the city the authority to pursue this in an effort to save residents' money. And then last year, the system that Columbia Gas used to calculate their gas price changed to an auction format, which changed the game a little bit and added quite a bit of uncertainty to what effect that would have on aggregation programs. And so I'm looking at it again this year with, you know, high heating bills coming up, probably sooner than most of us would like, and seeing if there's any opportunity here for the city to save, save money for its residents. I contacted at least one company that said they could offer a price that's slightly below Columbia Gas, and that would be fixed at below Columbia Gas's charges, so there would be no possibility of it ever being higher than what Columbia Gas charges. The difference, I still need to talk with some people at the state level to see if they have any advice, although I have consumers' councils been hit real hard. I've gone to them before in the past and gotten some really useful feedback. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I just received last week some, I think it's a CD of the PUCO gas rate requests from Columbia, I believe. I could get that to you if you want. I haven't had a chance to, I did have a chance to burn it onto my computer, but I haven't had a chance to prove it. I mean, essentially, I think it's like 170 pages or something, so.
Large document.
Well, somewhere better than that might be, you know, what we want to look at and where we want to go with this.
Yeah.
Again, I know we held off because of the sea change with Columbia Gas, but the next question is, do we want to lock ourselves in, and how do we want to do that? We, I haven't looked at it since we revisited that time in 2009, 10.
So it's.
Somehow, like, is it?
At least one company has, so the way they calculate the price now, my understanding is they take the wholesale NY-MEX, I'm not a financial expert by any means, they take whatever that wholesale price is and add a certain dollar fee, this is what Columbia does. And so what one company is offering, and I need to contact some others, is a fixed percentage off of that adder fee. So it would be essentially the same as Columbia Gas with a discount on a portion of their bill. And so I still need to find out exactly what that would amount to for individual households, or at least get an estimate.
In your conversation, did they talk about the lock-in time? How long we'd be stuck into it or contracted?
I believe it ends year to year, but usually, we can decide that with the city. So the next steps would be for the city to pick a consultant or a company to work with, and then council would look at an aggregation plan that would outline all those items, which would include the ability of someone to quit if they did not want to participate without, you know, depending on how much notice they get. So that would determine if there was a lock-in or not. And once that plan is put together, if it is, council would have to pass an ordinance and hold public hearings, and then the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio would take a look at it and have to give approval of that plan. So it's still a process. Public Utilities Commission takes about 30 days for their end of it, and so depending on what feedback I get from other companies and if you've had, heard, so that's where our aggregation, we're still pursuing it, trying to determine if we can get a safe, guaranteed savings for city residents. And you'll be hearing more about it, hopefully, hopefully good news. Any questions on the gas part? Okay, next is electricity supplier for, and this is a similar item, but this is for city operations only, city buildings, city utility bills. The same company that I spoke to about aggregation offers bulk rates, not bulk rates, they offer electricity to residents and businesses and government entities. And I'm not exactly sure what these prices would work out to be, this would take work from either the auditor's office or the mayor's office or both, to see how competitive these are, but I was told that they would save the city money, and it seems like right now we need to look under every stone to determine what we're paying for anything that we have a chance of saving on. Says a range of 6.34 cents, depending on how much electricity is purchased, to 6.94 cents per kilowatt hour. And it would depend on which city bills, I know we have dozens probably of electric bills, so it would take a little bit of effort to find out which of these would benefit from this contract, but I wanted to ask if that's something that is, is being pursued or could be pursued.
I guess we could look into it. If I remember, we have, we have lots of meters, but I think we have about four different levels in terms of the amount.
Type of customer?
Well, yeah, essentially how much it gets used, a water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, are big uses. I think we looked at this about two years ago, and we, I think we only had to change one of the metering systems, but that, I did, I have heard some people talk about electric aggregation, or at least cost savings. I really have pursued it at this point.
And then it's something that changed relatively recently in terms of it making sense to do, from what I can tell. Until recently, it was simply cheaper to stay with Columbus Southern versus an alternative supplier, but things have changed in the market within the past few months or years.
Keep changing.
They do, they change all the time. And that's all I have for the environment committee, unless there's a miscellaneous from anyone.
Okay. We don't have any other miscellaneous coming up, so that's the end of our committee.